So Alicia, I think we probably should get started.
Sounds good.
So what I'd like to do is to open the planning board hearing for the continued Newbury Golf Center public hearing modification to previous approved mitigation of the services beyond approved limit of work with the planning board. It's a modification to previously approved site plans with the select board. It's a modification to special permit. The planning board will open its meeting now. Can I have a motion to do so?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call. George? Larry?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, am I missing anybody? Because I don't have a picture in front of me. Nope, I think we're good. Okay, and the chair is in favor. All you, Alicia?
Um, sorry, I was trying to...
Do you want to open your meeting?
Yep, so...
Motion to open, do we need it?
Yes.
Oh, motion open.
Second.
Okay, so this...
Roll call.
Roll call, vote quick.
Sorry, okay. Trying to get Jerry. Okay, so Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey? Alicia Greco, yes.
Oh, Jerry's coming now.
Do you see her coming in?
Yeah, I just admitted her.
That's what I was trying to look at, and I lost track of what Pete was saying.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, I can move into opening remarks.
Okay.
As a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I'm the chair for the planning board. Speaking on behalf of both the planning board and the select board, permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. George Morris? Larry Murphy?
Here.
Thank you. Leslie Matthews?
Here.
Thank you. Woody Knight?
Yes.
Okay. Select board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeffrey Walker?
Yes.
Jerolene Heevey?
Yes.
And Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Town council, when I please, please respond in the affirmative. Brian Winer?
Brian Winer is present.
Thank you. Excuse me, town staff, when I call your name, please... In the affirmative, Martha Taylor?
Here.
Thank you. Emily Noble? Emily Noble?
She's here, she's muted.
Okay, great. Julie O'Brien?
Here.
Thank you. Police chief, please respond in the affirmative. Chief John Lucy?
Here.
Anticipated speakers, representatives on the agenda, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Eric Sorensen?
Here.
Scott Cameron?
Yeah, Mike Laham is here from the Moore Cameron Group.
Great. Michael Rosen?
Yeah.
Thank you. You'll be some of the introductory remarks. Good evening. This is October 14th, 2020, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board and the Newbury Sports being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate... In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's orders suspend the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which can be posted, can be found posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted in the planning board's agenda and the select board's agenda, both of which can be found on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056, or by calling 9292056...
See, I lost you.
71...
I can't hear you.
Hopefully, I'll be coming back. Okay, I apologize. I apologize. Comcast internet is wonky, and if I go out, hopefully, I'll come back quickly. I'll pick up from telephone can be accessed by 9292056099, and entering the meeting ID 83271413056. Please note that tonight's planning board meeting is being held jointly with the select board and is a continuance of a public hearings regarding the Newbury Golf Center. Please note that for this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. With regards to meeting materials, these were provided to the board prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state intention after you have been called. So we have some meeting business ground rules. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for an effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate minutes. I, as a chair, on behalf of both boards, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of planning board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Acting Select Board Chair Alicia Greco will similarly go down the list of select board members. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone, which is star six to toggle to mute or unmute, or on the computer, the mute button when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphone when using tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that we can help generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait for the chair to yield the floor. You will then state your name before speaking. Board members should be called upon first in alphabetical order and then to ease this process. If board members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please go, do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself when speaking. With regards to public comments, there will be an opportunity for public comments and questions during the public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the raise hand function. For video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. Hover your cursor in this area if you don't see it. A window will open and displayed on the right. In this window, you'll see a list of phone slash video participants. On the bottom of the window, below the list of participants, you will see an option to click on a button to raise your hand. Please ensure that your full name is displayed, and you may rename yourself... Using the more functions next to your name. Your phone keypad raise hand function by hitting star nine. I will allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed. Our system lists in order by whom raises a hand first. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant slash participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. The board will continue down the list of those of the raise hand column, and again, afford participants, applicants, representatives, the opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical, electronic submitted questions or concerns, they will be written to the record, and again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And to confirm, each vote will be taken. This meeting will be conducted roll call, and my vice chair will be sure to reinforce that with me. Okay, now, I'm going to minimize this, and what I'm going to do next is pull up our agenda here. So I will officially open the site plan review public hearing. The planning board is considering an application for modification to a previously approved site plan submitted by Eric Sorensen, President of Newbury Golf Center, Inc., for Newbury Golf Center 131133151 Scotland Road Assessor's Map R43 Lots 211 and 4B. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work for the project. Note, approval requires a simple majority, three out of five votes for the planning board. The original site plan approval was granted in November 2017. Alicia, this is you.
So the select board is considering an application submitted by Eric Sorensen, President Newbury Golf Center, Inc., for modification to the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center 131133151 Scotland Road Assessor's Map R43 Lots 211 and 4B. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work for the project. Approval requires a super majority, four out of five votes of the select board. Since J.R. Colby has accused himself, approval of the select of the special permit modification request will require all four remaining members to vote in favor. Original special permit was granted November 15th, 2017.
Thank you, Alicia. So just want to go over some parameters of how our meeting will be handled tonight, and I will apologize if my internet does go wonky. Try to stick with it, and hopefully, it'll come back. What will happen first is the applicant will present any new materials, and then the planning board and select board members will ask questions, make comments, and then following that, the hearing will be open for public questions. Okay, so at this point, I just want to go over a couple issues before we have the applicant present any new materials. Currently, we have some outstanding issues that need to be addressed. To date, and Martha, correct me if I'm, if I speak in a, out of context here, but as from my understanding, there is no final as-built plan yet received. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We do not have a resolution to the final remaining mitigation plan in screening. Is that also correct?
Correct.
Okay. And those are, I think, the major issues. Alicia, am I missing anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, great. So I want to, at our last meeting, it was agreed upon by both councils representing the town, as well as a council representing the applicant, that we would jointly, or they would jointly try to secure a lighting consultant. So both legal teams were agreed to look into the industry for lighting consultants. And what I've learned is that there was a consultant that was... That a discussion was initiated by our council, and there was interest, and a scope of work had not been designed, and that interested applicant or consultant did not follow up. Tom Monday had an interview with another consultant, and so that consultants that Mr. Rosen might have secured or questioned. What I have also learned is that this industry is very limited to individuals that are freestanding, that don't have a relationship with any particular lighting entity. And as was agreed upon by both parties, both the town and the applicant, we were looking for a neutral individual who had no interest or had no exposure to this project, and that's why we wanted to get a fresh opinion to help us with the lighting situation. So that is what I have to report on the status of our lighting consultant. Alicia, did you want to add anything to that?
I think you've covered it.
Okay, great. Since this continues to be an open public hearing, some traffic concerns have been raised. And Martha, do you want to just highlight real quickly what those concerns were raised and how they were raised?
Well, they've been raised a couple of times. The last time, the last meeting, we had had communication from Claire Dix, who had raised some concerns about the location of the driveway and related traffic concerns. And most recently, we received, actually, the select board members received a, an email from John Ferrara. I believe that was dated September 28th, raising some, raising concerns, and that email is in your packet. There was a follow-up email from him after a response from Alicia, and this was forwarded to Chief Lucy, who responded with some recommendations, and his email also dated September 28th is in, was in your packets or was forwarded to you all.
Okay, so we might have to have the chief discuss that once we get a little bit further. So those are kind of the items that are outstanding right now, requirements that are we have not received yet and have been promised. Our decision is in process, and then we have traffic issues that have been raised. So I wanted to now turn over to our applicant, Eric, to see, Eric, if you wanted to present any new materials, or status, and/or a status report on the outstanding requirements, especially the as-built plan.
Let me give it, let me give you an update on everything first, and then I will hand it over to my engineer to talk about the as-built. So just to update everybody, we've been open 47 days, over 750,000 golf balls have been hit. We've had over 100 juniors go through our program, over 50 ladies. We have had multiple high schools practice, college teams practice here. It's been, it's been busy. So I think just in a small sample, 47 days, it's shown us how successful it's been. Twelve out of my 16 employees live in either Byfield or Newbury, so we're hiring local people. It's been, it's been great. Obviously, I've reached out to the town multiple times about the lighting situation, and have received updates, obviously, through the lawyers about what's going on that is a concern. The light, I would like to get this situation solved as soon as possible. However, we can work together to get this moving in the right direction, from employee safety issue to the public. But, you know, I think we're going in the right direction, and obviously, we'll discuss that more tonight. That's all I have for report for this, and then I'm going to hand it over to Mike, and he'll talk a little bit about the as-built and the other.
Thank you, Eric. Mike, is, are you up next?
Yes, this is Mike Laham with the Moore Cameron Group, civil engineer. Yeah, so the as-built plan, I mean, I honestly, I was under the impression that, you know, we satisfied, I think, the needs of what we were looking at as far as stormwater compliance, working with the conservation agent on, on the partial kind of as-built that we've, that we've done, and we kind of confirming the stormwater components of the project. And I apologize, I guess I'd need to be directed to the requirement for, you know, what exactly is needed for for this as-built. It's not typically needed for, for right away at this stage. I just, so if someone maybe, it doesn't need to be right now, but if someone can direct me to what, what the requirement is for the as-built, that would be great. We have our surveyors scheduled to do some final work out there. So, you know, it's underway. It's just that the as-built is not, is not done. So we can, we can communicate later on that one. But that's, that is all I have on that.
Okay, just for clarification, Martha, do you want to give a couple of words about as-built and where we are or should be with that?
And basically, I spoke with Bill Holt, the conservation agent, this morning, and he indicated that he is still waiting for the as-built. I think the partial that was provided, you know, gives some of the information that's needed, but we really need an as-built for the entire site, indicating everything that has been built or installed. And that needs to be said.
Prior to what? Prior to what?
What do you mean, prior to what? For the whole...
What are we?
So, Mike, let me hop in. I mean, traditionally, as-built are delivered after a project is permitted. You know, you deliver your final as-built to the conservation to get a certificate of compliance. You don't have to do that as a condition prior to opening. You know, here, technically, the site isn't completed yet. There might still be some lighting and other landscaping changes that might come into play. So I, so I think Mike's point is that he's got a working draft. The big concerns and the big outstanding issues with stormwater, that that working draft has been submitted, but kind of as a matter of regulation, normally, as-bills are delivered after everything is completed, and certainly, we're talking about, we're going to talk about some signage tonight. We're talking about lighting tonight. A final as-built wouldn't traditionally be prepared and delivered until after those events occurred. So I guess, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, what you're asking is, what, what are we trying to, from a regulatory perspective, comply with by delivering an as-built when we're not 100% built yet?
Well, that's right.
Thank you. I think what we're trying to do is we want to make sure that the stormwater management plan is quite buttoned up.
Okay.
And you can't go anywhere without conservation saying that's the case. So I think that's pretty point period. It needs to be done.
Excuse me, Pete, can I, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure, sure, Alicia.
So I understood, and I'm going to ask Brian Winner, our council, to chime in on this if I have this incorrect, but I understood that most of, most projects as-built plans are submitted before the project is built. Then the project is built, and then the built, and then the, and the project is built to the specifications of the plans. This project is unique, as that didn't happen. The project was approved. There was I don't know how to, how to say this. Like, there was, the project was approved. The applicant hired some contract labor that came in and damaged the process. Then the special permit had to be reopened for the mitigation, and then there was never a set of plans submitted again to the town that accurately represented the project the way it currently is built. And when we ask for as-built, it's because the town doesn't have, and I need you guys to confirm this, because this is what I understand, but I'm not sure if I'm 100% accurate, that currently, the way the project is built, the town, the conservation agent, the planning department does not have accurate plans representing what is accurately built there. And legally, our bylaw states that we cannot issue any kind of a certificate of comply, of compliant occupancy or anything until as-built plans are submitted. Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
So I could ask our, Brian, our council to comment on that, just to validate?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And let me rephrase it slightly, because I think in concept, you're stating it correctly. But just to sort of put it in a nutshell, you know, your normal permitting case is design, then permit, then build, and then comes an as-built plan that gets reviewed by the engineering teams and certified, and then the building department signs off and allows occupancy. Now, what we have here is a completely backward situation where there was no approved plan. There was no special permit, site plan review granted, and yet, the construction already occurred. So I think what the town has been looking for, for some time, and then I mean town with a capital T, all the various town departments that are involved in this project, is now that the applicant is asking the respective boards here tonight to eventually issue a permit that approves this site, we want to know what was actually constructed. What are we approving? Because we're not now approving something that's going to go out and be built later on, but we have an actual constructed, you know, stormwater management system and an entirely developed site, and we want to know what it is. And we want the departments to be able to review that, see how it was constructed, see that it's in conformity with the recommendations and best practices and regulations as well, et cetera, before the boards and the respective town departments sign off on that. So normally, that step wouldn't come until after the public hearing process, the permit issues, and then the site got constructed. But since the site was constructed before any of that happened, that's something that the boards and the department has need to know before they can sign off on it. We need to know what's, what's been constructed and whether or not it's compliant. So I think that's why it's, it's coming a little bit out of order from a traditional permitting process, because this has been anything but a traditional permitting process. So now we've got something that's in operation, but we don't even have a plan that necessarily shows it.
So, so, and just because I think maybe Mike is, is stuck on the terminology as-built. What you're saying is, you want an updated design plan to reflect the changes that were made as a result of the impacts, because you have the design plan that was pre-impact, but you don't necessarily know that you have a design plan that was post-impact. But, and, and Mike Laham, what you're saying is, but as-bills come after you get your occupancy permit, and after the cons comm, you know, after you were already up and running, you go to cons comm 30, 60, 90 days later when you get your certificate of compliance based on an as-built plan. So I think, and Alicia, to answer your question, and Brian, cut me off if you think I'm wrong, the term as-built refers to something specific within the permitting dargan, and that's generally a plan that is delivered later. But what you're saying, chair, as chairs or boards, is forget the terminology, forget what you're calling the plan. We want to see a plan that on a piece of paper shows us what the revised design is that takes into effect everything that has, for lack of a better term, gone wrong along the way, so that in the future, when you get your as-built, your cons comm agent, your planner will be able to compare that as-built with the updated design. Is that, Brian, is that a...
If, if I can respond. Because, yeah, I don't want to get bogged down in semantics. That's why I elected to rephrase how Ms. Greco was stating it, because that's right. I mean, the term as-built is a term of art. So let's not get hung up on the semantics. I think the idea is to capture what's on the ground. We want to see that as a plan. We want to know what's built.
Okay, so, so Mike?
Can I, can I say something?
Um, go ahead.
This is my, this is Mike again. So like, that's, I mean, that's exactly what I submitted at the last, this is the plan that we had the whole last meeting on. That's, that, that is the plan that you guys are talking about. That is the plan that is the modified plan that shows everything that has changed. That's, that's, that's the plan we're talking about here. And I, and I guess that it's just, it's, I'm sorry, it's hard for me, but, you know, the, I thought we were clear about what the plan is, that I presented, that I stamped. That's the plan that, that shows the modified design, as Michael Rosen had, had said it. And we have the additional benefit of, not only is it, is it, is it the modified design plan, but also it shows many of the as-built features as they are on the ground. So it actually has a kind of a additional benefit of that. However, it is not, it is not an as-built, nor is an as-built used or performed at this time. What, what, what I was tasked with was preparing a modified site plan, and that's what I did, and that's what the town has. So it's just, it's hard for me to, to, to grasp, like, what we're looking for here.
Let me help you, Mike. Apparently, conservation still has some outstanding issues, and I think it'd be probably in everyone's best interest for you to reach out to conservation, see what is necessary so that that aspect of this project can be buttoned up. How's that sound?
Yeah, that's a certificate of compliance with conservation process. We haven't initiated that process yet.
Mike, I don't think that's what Peter's asking for. I think what Peter is asking is, if they're looking at what's in the ground, and they're looking at your design plans, they want to understand, and they have some questions that might be better explained. I don't necessarily know that they're looking for an as-built plan, and if, if that's what they're asking you for, Mike, I agree with you. If conservation is just saying, yeah, this works, I need an as-built, that you don't need to get to get a building permit. There's nothing under Massachusetts law that requires a, a, a... There's nothing under Massachusetts law that requires a Conservation Commission certificate of compliance with an order of conditions prior to occupancy. But if there's an actual, as Peter seems to be indicating, an actual concern that they have, Mike, you need to get out there and ask them what it is and make sure it, and if there isn't a concern, then at the end of the day, I would draft an email, I would send it to Conservation, I would copy Martha so she can share it with the boards and confirm that you have answered their questions. And as is shown on the revised design plan, they are comfortable that if and when you get to the point of filing an as-built, it will be satisfactory.
Great. Thank you for, for helping with that discussion, Attorney Rosen. I think that was helpful.
I'm going to say something really quick, and that is the fact that the public is not allowed to opine.
Excuse me for a sec. Excuse me. The way that this, I'm sorry, the way that this meeting works is there'll be a time for public comment.
I know, but I have a daughter that's like five. It's hard for me to like, be able to opine when you want me to. I love you guys. I'm sure you all have children. It's so hard, especially during COVID. And like, I'm trying to wait to opine, and I love all of you guys. Like, you're all doing the best job you can. To be fair, like, is there another forum where I can opine?
Yes, there will be a forum later on in the same meeting, but you need to understand that we're trying to operate under parliamentary procedure. That's how the law works. So you need to wait patiently and, you know, put your daughter on your lap and put yourself on mute and read a nice book to her until it's time for you to opine.
Okay, God bless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, can I opine for a second?
Oh, yes.
I just got to ask for clarity and maybe from Brian, your board. And it's for the public's, really, to set straight. I remember lots of plans as the project went along. I mean, and I was on the planning board, and I understand, you know, what an as-built will be towards the end of this, I suppose, you know, meaning, you know, where the builders decided, and, but I mean, we went through drainage plans, we went through this plan, we went through lighting plans. I mean, I have had plans come, I mean, I got a closet full. So I, I think people should understand, it's not like Eric didn't do any plans. So that's just my clarification.
Thank you for that clarification, Jeff. Just so we can move along. Mike, I think if you have a conversation with Conservation, that will help the discussion. And I think what we'd like to do is just kind of move on to reporting what's going on with our lighting consultant. Brian, do you want to just give historical, what you did, and then I can ask Martha just to fill us in on her, her end?
Sure. I'll try to summarize what our efforts were after the last meeting. So as you recall, on the August 26 meeting, I was instructed to try to procure the services of a qualified lighting consultant to serve as a peer reviewer for the board. And the qualifications essentially, aside from the technical qualifications are, that they would have to not have been involved in the project before and be truly an objective, neutral third party to come in and look at what's been constructed, number one, and two, to look at potential mitigation solutions for any issues that they identified. And so I consulted with some of the design and engineering professionals that I've worked with in the past to see if they could do it, and also to see if they could recommend someone if they couldn't do it. That led me to an individual that I interviewed and discussed this, this, this project with. We got as close as a scope of services and engagement letter. However, that was never consummated, although we thought we had that person ready to come on board at that time. Sort of in parallel, Ms. Taylor was cultivating other options, and we were continuing to search for for other people who might be able to fill this role. And as you alluded to earlier in the evening, Mr. Chairman, what we come to learn, and partially the reason why it was so hard to track down certain individuals is that often these consultant services are provided by the manufacturer. So it's a bundle deal, a package deal, if you will, where you not only get the product, but you get the advocacy and the, the technical support along with the product. So there were very few people in this field who were truly independent and able to also provide this service. There were very few names on our list. And unfortunately, some of the people we contacted initially weren't able to fulfill this role. So we're now moving on to another individual, and I'll let Ms. Taylor talk about this person and where we're at in the process there. But just to sort of make a long story short, we've been diligently pursuing this engagement since the last meeting. We've just run into difficulties in terms of how, how small the field really is and how many people are available to work on this timeframe and in this particular field. Although we think we're getting very, or hopefully at least, very close to not only identifying an appropriate person, but bringing them on board. So that's been my process so far. And I haven't heard, aside from the shortlist that we created, any other suggestions. So I don't think we've received any other sort of avenues to explore other than the ones Ms. Taylor and I have come up with. And the reason I mention that is just to say we, we haven't left any stone unturned.
Thank you, Brian. Martha, do you want to just give a brief update where you are with the person you've been speaking with?
Certainly. My, my experience was basically very similar to Attorney Winter's experience. I contacted somebody who is very knowledgeable in this field, especially, you know, the impact of exterior lighting. And it was the same situation. She actually works for a company, so she could not provide what we're looking for with, you know, independently the company that she's working with. But she referred me to somebody that she has worked with who seems to have very good qualifications. I had a Zoom interview with him on Monday morning. He has sent me the qualification, his qualifications and a list of things that he would like to have in order to put together his scope of work. And so I'm, I'm hoping, I'm planning to get that assembled in the next day and get that to him so that we can get a scope and, and, you know, get a, get a contract letter and authorization letter so that he can, he can proceed. We'll get a fee estimate from him.
Great. Okay, thank you. And Attorney Rosen, did you have any opportunity to find any individuals from your arena that would be an independent set of eyes that could look at this project?
I spoke to Attorney Winter. He had a few contacts that he was chasing down, and he asked me to sit tight. And then he obtained that first expert. So we just sat back and waited. Brian sent me the information on the expert. I vetted him for conflicts to make sure we had none. And I would say, what, Brian, until last Thursday, I actually thought that you had engaged somebody that had kind of cleared our conflicts. And until then, that was the first indication I got from Brian that they were having trouble pulling together a contract with him. So we were going to touch base again, and we did earlier today, at which point Brian did let me know that Ms. Taylor had identified somebody. Brian shared that name with me. I have checked their online CV on LinkedIn and ran conflicts with my office to ensure that, you know, he's not working on a project with us or opposite us on any matter. And other than that, I have been deferring to Attorney Winter.
I would encourage, if possible, if you have any individuals who you think might be appropriate for this, to bring those names forward so that we can try to mutually work on this situation. So this issue, which seemed to be of paramount concern, can be resolved. So it can be resolved. That'd be helpful. Thank you so much.
Just if there are things that he needs in order to put together his proposal, my suggestion would be to have him get in touch with Scott or Mike, and they could coordinate getting to him directly in the appropriate format that he might be looking for data that would make it easier for him to ascertain what we have and what's available versus what he might need to compile. I think, you know, either Mike Laham or Scott Cameron, and if they need to reach out to Mike Musco, Mike@Musco to get any data that they have assembled, that they would be a good conduit so that they could go kind of engineer to engineer and make sure whatever they have and they need is in the right format.
Is Musco involved in this process, or they're not involved in this process?
Well, so we agreed at our prior hearing six weeks ago that we were going to go back to an independent, somebody that not work. So Musco has made themselves available to come and do like light readings and any other work on the site and is available to provide data and plans. And Musco would be available to do this particular work right now. But based on my discussions with Attorney Winter and my recollection of our last meeting, the decision we all made was we were going to look for somebody who has not yet been involved in this project because we want a fresh set of eyes to look at all of it. You're, Peter, you're muted.
That was also my understanding. Thank you, that we would have an independent new set of eyes looking at this. Okay, so.
Peter, can I just bring one thing up with, with Musco and Mike Berry, who you've met before? The only thing he wanted to do is he has that machine, and I don't, I'm not an expert in the lighting industry, but he has that machine that will read the lumens. So I don't know whoever we hire or agree to hire, if they don't have that machine, because I think we do need that to read the lumens. So I don't know if that's an option that you would agree to have Mike Berry just give you the factual information, not be an opinion, to come out and read those lumens?
I think, yeah, I think once the consultants on board, we can figure out what they need. And if it's a tool that they don't have and would benefit from utilizing, I think that'd be a great offer. So thank you for that.
The person that I've spoken with does have the ability to read lumens. He also talked about luminescence. So if, if it's appropriate, I can put him in touch with Scott or Mike Laham and take it from there. But to Attorney Rosen, did you, in your vetting, did you find any conflicts, or does it, does there appear to be?
I, I just started to look, but I have, you know, when we do a conflict review within the office, we circulate the name around to all the attorneys in the firm. So I just recently did that, and I have not heard anything back from anybody yet. But we have six different real estate attorneys in the office that work on various projects. So it may take 24 hours until I hear back from anybody to confirm, yes, I either have him on a project or no, I don't, you know, or I'm across from him in a project.
Great, thank you. What I'd like to do now is I'd just like, is there anything else that should be, will be presented, Eric, from your team?
No.
Okay, thanks. What I'd like to do is I'd like to open it up first to the planning board to see if there, if any board members have any questions to ask. So first, Larry, do you have any questions?
I don't think so at this point, no.
Great. George, do you have any questions, sir? Okay, no questions. I choose, I think you're muted, George.
I have no questions. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, George. Leslie, do you have any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Woody, do you have any questions, sir?
No, not at this time.
Great, thank you. Alicia, over to your board.
I'm going to do the same thing. I'm going to ask Jeff, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good right now.
Jerry, do you have any questions? Mike, do you have any questions? You're, you're on mute, Mike.
One question. This, I'm new to the planning board. The thing about the luminance, okay? Is this done in every project? I mean, it's like, if we, if we put a gas station in, if we put, you know, a police station in, if we put any, you know, do we do this in every project to see the lighting effect on the neighborhood?
I, I can try to help you with that, Mike. The planning board does look at that. We do look at spillover into adjacent areas. And with this particular project, when it started, Mike, there was actually a different contractor that was doing the lighting. That's where we bumped into a problem. There was already kind of an approved lighting situation with a defined lumen projection. So we knew all that information. So that was kind of something that was already approved in a previous situation. So when the lighting changed, just prior to the, Eric opening his business, he used a different contractor. There was no exchange of information. And when the lights went on, it was a very different interpretation as to what was presented. And that's why we're in the situation that we're in now.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Let's see. Martha, I think we should probably just kind of acknowledge what's been going on with our, our traffic concerns. Do you want to read the letters that have come in, or do you want to just move right to Chief Lucy?
It's, whatever your preference would be. First, it's not, not terribly long, so I can read it if you'd like.
Well, I think if we have them as a part of the record, I think we're good. I think what I'd like to do is, since we have the chief here, I'd like to have him kind of express observations and the concerns that he has and his recommendations. I think that'd be best use of time.
Thank you very much for the invitation. I do have to say this, the urgency of my concerns was elevated very dramatically when I saw on the participants list that Tiger Woods was in attendance. And I'm sure when that gets out, the popularity of the site's going to be very, very much improved. Congratulations, Mr. Sorenson, on your success that you alluded to thus far. I hope that continues. The concerns that, that I've had reflected in your packet, it's, it's traffic. I'm not so pleased in here as far as, you know, your decisions or adjustments with your board. But it's just something that is, you know, is affected by, you know, the presence of the, the golf center. And as I'm sure everybody knows, the, the location of the, the main access is on a bend on Scotland Road. And when you look at Google Maps, it doesn't look so bad because it's kind of a gradual bend. But the line of sight is the issue with the elevations that are on the, the golf course, the, the golf center side. So what we have there is a 45 mile an hour zone. And in coming around the corner with the traffic either waiting too slow to enter into the, into the establishment, or traffic that's waiting in the center lane that's heading west to cross in, or people that are leaving the, the establishment and just building up speed, you know, in the travel lane heading towards Newburyport. That, that's where we've had some close calls reportedly. And I've visited the area, I've observed it, and I can, I can see the concern. But I'm not one to bring concerns without resolution. I think Teddy Roosevelt said it best when he says complaining without a solution is whining. So what I would propose is doing is traffic study. And let's just see what the 85th percentile is in that area. I expect that reducing that, that the resultant of the, of the inspection of the area, reducing the speed limit to 40 would be appropriate. There's a lot going on in that area as well. There's the school bus depot, there's the, the state DPW site there, the state police barracks. And so there's a lot of activity there anyway. And the other thing too is a lot of sign. And signage, when it becomes too much, becomes white noise. I'm sure you're all aware of that, you know. So putting up more signs saying caution, traffic entering, exiting. It has a limited effect, I think. People get desensitized, especially when there's, you know, when there's abundance of signage. We did, just as a precautionary, we did deploy a sign saying that, you know, right now. That indicates traffic is turning and entering. But the most effective recourse, I think, be a reduction, and I hope that's what the study would show, a reduction in the speed limit. The reason why that that's really effective is, number one, it's a reduction in the speed limit. But number two, what we do is once that adjustment happens, we'll notify the, the major GPS companies, TomTom, Google, and we'll send them. All the vehicles now, they have the speed limits listed on their GPSs. And that's just another measure of, hey, you gotta slow down a little bit. So it kind of gets the message out there, you know, very inertly. And that might help too. So that's the direction I'm hoping we'll go in. I'm not going to sit here and pretend that I know the exact process for that, but I can promise this, I can find out the process for that. You know, as far as, if given the direction, you know, looking into a traffic study.
Thank you, Chief. We have the, the pleasure that we have a relationship with MVPC. And Martha, we've talked about maybe engaging MVPC to look into a traffic study for this. Do you want to just touch on that real quick?
Well, my, my suggestion was we might start with Tony Komornik, who heads up the transportation group at MVPC. They do a lot of traffic studies in the area. They may already have some data for this particular stretch of Scotland Road in terms of actual speeds and what the 85th percentile might be, traffic counts or whatever. So I thought it might be reasonable to start with him to see if this is something that either they can look at or else whether it might be beneficial for us to go outside to get an independent consultant. But I think MVPC is definitely a place to. But I think NVPC is definitely a place to start.
Okay, great. Thank you, Martha. Um, what I'd like to do is open up to both courts to have any discussion with regards to uh, traffic and potential mitigation. Components. So um, let's start with Larry. Do you have any thoughts or concerns, sir?
Just a couple of questions to the chief. Uh, this is, Scotland Road is maintained by the town, I believe, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is.
So we can, the the town in the, in the form of the selectmen can set the speed limits there?
Not necessarily. There are, there are statutes, um, you know, uh, that have, there has to be a traffic study and has to be approved by the state.
Okay. And you, can you explain for a layman such as myself, what what the 85th percentile?
Yeah, I can. And I I'm gonna be, in the interest of full disclosure, I I'm just, just above a layman because I did some studying up on this. Uh, this is my first uh. Experience and pursuant of this. And I have talked to the DPW director to get some guidance, you know, and we're, we're kind, you know, we're figuring this out together. Basically, what the 85th percentile is, it's a study that's done, and I do not know the period of time. Um, I can find out more information for you, but um. There's a study that's done and what they're looking for is what is the 85% of the traffic doing? You know, uh, for a speed. That's how they establish what a reasonable speed limit is. And then there's an adjustment based on that. But that's the first step, figuring out what, you know, it's assumed they have to start someplace. So it's assumed that 80, if 85% of the cars are going this speed. Then that is presumably a safe speed for that area. Now it's, now it's to a geographical adjustment uh, based on what's going on around that 85th percentile. So I hope to answer your question. That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Uh, George, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, the only comment I would have would it makes some sense to have more lighting at the edge of the road. Now where the entrance, entrance is to give people just a visual warning early on that there's something going on there. I like the chief's comments about signs. Some of the signs coming in, I like those LED trim signs that flash during the night. They're just terrific. They give you a lot of warning. So those are some thoughts I had.
Thank you, George. Um, Leslie, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I do have a couple of comments and. In what George just said, that the. Increase on lighting would only be during the dark hours. Uh, so it wouldn't benefit the daylight hours. I think that the abutter to the west has. Been very open to uh, taking down of. The, the end of the driveway trees to allow a better visual coming. From the west to the east. I could be wrong on that, but uh, I I think I've heard the abutter say that she would be. Very much inclined to uh, have that happen. I don't know if, you know, you you put a sign up down. If you put, try to put a sign up down the street in any direction, it falls onto other people's properties. So that really isn't going to work unless. You can get a permit on that. And I don't think blinking light. Will help because it's only gonna help if, once you come around the corner, you see it. Those are my concerns that, those are my questions.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, Woody, do you have any uh? Questions or concerns or points of discussion for this?
No, not at this time. Um. Larry and. George touched base on anything I would have asked. So, no, not this time.
Um, Alicia, I'd like to turn it over to your board.
Thank you, Pete. Um, so I'm gonna go through the board members and start with you, Jeff. Do you have any questions or concerns about the traffic?
No, I think um, I think what John said is very relevant. Where we do have the um, you know, the state and you have the bust uh, terminal. You know, lowering the speed, driving a motorcycle, you certainly, things happen to people going faster than they do going slower. So. And put some bicycles on the road and other things. So, you know, if the speed, you know, in that area, just on that corner, you know, in that area where. The other institutions are was 35 or whatever. It would be lowered to, it certainly makes sense because it gives people more time to react. And the people pulling out of the driveway would have more time to exit the driveway or enter the driveway.
Thank you, Jeff. Jerry, do you have any comments?
I do. Um, I, I know at one point the driveway was reconfigured because of uh, traffic issues. Was that not based on a, a traffic study? And it just seems to me it's kind of late in the day to now talk about a traffic study. And who has to, who has to pay for the traffic study?
Pete, do you mind take that?
Yeah, Jerry, I can, I can try, I can try to help with it. Uh, the reason uh, that driveway was moved, and again, if I speak out of line, uh, Martha, please help me here. The reason that the driver was originally moved was concerned with the abutters property, the driveway, proposed driveway entrance would have been. Right on the, adjacent to the property line of the abutters. And it was, there was concern regarding the degree of traffic, lighting, noise. Uh, and so it was agreed upon that the driveway would be moved to the other end of the site. I can tell you that during site visits, at least two that I was on, um, over the months, last years that um, we visited the site. Uh, when the driver was reconfigured, um, comments were made about concern of line of sight where the driver was. And what could potentially be a concern with that going forward. Uh, the applicant was, heard those concerns. Uh, his engineer heard those concerns. They were expressed. Um, there wasn't any uh, action taken on it. Uh, there was no further discussion of it. Um, so. Uh, you're, you're right, Jerry. Here we are. We're in a situation, uh, but we have a situation. So we need to. Look at it and uh, try to figure out in a mutual manner, what is the best way? To make sure that we have a safe environment. Something that clicked on when this started, no, we didn't do a traffic study beforehand. And so we're going to do a traffic study now. But what we don't know is we don't know how much the increase in volume of traffic will occur as.
You, you broke it, breaking up.
Of this uh, site. Uh, it it happens at the best times. So what we don't have, we don't have an appreciation of what the volume of traffic to the site singularly is and what impact that has to the overall traffic because there wasn't a pre-traffic study done. So. Uh, it's a, you know, it's a situation that we're going to have to try to work through collaboratively to get to an endpoint.
And who pays for it? Does it, does the town or the applicant?
Well, that's an interesting question. Uh, there wouldn't be an issue, um, if there wasn't a, you know, if there wasn't a, a new endeavor there. So I think that's something that we're going to have to work through in, through discussions.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Jerry. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Jerry. Uh, Mike, do you have any questions?
Yeah, a couple. Um. When the driveway was moved, okay, was it, did Eric pick out the where it was gonna go? Did the town pick out where it was go? Did the engineers? Who decided on that location?
Uh, I can.
Pete, you want that?
I can try to answer again, Mike.
The reason I bring it up, we shouldn't make, if the town made him move the.
It's okay. And Mike, yeah, no, no, it's a, it's a great question, Mike. And thank you for, for asking it. Because both Mike and Jerry, I know that you weren't here a couple of years ago when this, when this happened. It was moved by the applicant. Uh, the, the, uh, the boards expressed their concern with regards to it. The engineering firm. I forget the, what was the name of the engineering firm, Martha?
It was Meridian.
Meridian, Meridian did the, did the plan. And actually, as I recall, um, the driveway cut-in actually started prior to having. A sign off by the boards to do so. So actually, the driver was put in before we said, go ahead and do it. So again, this, this project's been kind of a little bit cumbersome and it's how it's rolled out. And we're just trying to pick up the pieces as we, as we get to it. So. It was not, it was not, um, right.
One other, one other thing I was just gonna bring up, um. When you come out and do down Newburyport Turnpike and before you hit the um. The big landscaping place, okay? If they have a sign and it's a hill there, okay, and you're going up over hill real quick, and they're gonna sign that's, you know. Stoplights ahead, number one, or there's an intersection ahead, and it's, and it really, it, and it's flashy to speed even. So. We can put something around that corner to slow them down. I think if that, that might, I'm not sure if we have to go to state. I don't think we have to go to state because it's a town road, but. There's some, there's electronic things that get people's attention. And I think that might be an idea. Uh, and the last thing I want to say is basically to alliterate Pete. If these letters came in on September 28th. I would really appreciate to see them closer to two weeks ago than. Maybe I got them yesterday. And like I said, I didn't get a chance to read them till today, when I got out of work. If stuff comes in early, I would like to see it disseminated to the boards on a rate, on an earlier basis the day before.
Okay, Mike, that, that's, that, this was sent in, it was actually gonna be part of our discussion. It was submitted for our board meeting and then I pulled it. Um, or Martha pulled it because it should be appropriate to be in the public hearing.
But.
Yep.
Yep, and I got it yesterday. It's nice to have more time.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I'm saying. Thank you. I'm all done.
Um, okay, and I, I am, the only comment that I do want to make is about the sign. If we do decide to go with signage, um, the um. The property, the town owns property 10 feet in on each side of the road. So um, if we were to um, have signs installed, it wouldn't be on anyone's private property. I want to make sure that that's clear. So, um. And I think other than that, everything else that I wanted, I was covered for me. Back to you, Pete.
Opportunity. Uh, now, yep, now that the courts uh, have had. Have had an opportunity to hear from the applicants and ask their questions, uh, it'll be time to now open our meeting for public comment. So I hope that Amy is still with us so that um, she can raise her hand and um, ask her comments or questions. So folks, if you'd like to ask a comment or a question. Please raise your hand, uh, as we talked about with the participants' section and do that right click and raise your hand and we'll answer. People as they ask their questions. So Martha, I'm gonna let you kind of.
All right, the, the first one we have is.
Control trap.
Okay, Janine Cunningham was the first to raise her hand.
You're on mute, Janine.
Yeah, Janine, if you can unmute yourself.
About that. Um, uh, as you know, I'm directly next door. I am the neighbor that Leslie was talking about. We have already lifted and removed some of my trees. And it gives me a much better visual as you're coming down Scotland Road headed to Newburyport. But I will tell you, um, and Chief Lucy, you must know this, people do not travel 45 miles an hour. I had children that I put on the school bus. And as I'm standing in my driveway with my kids, the people are passing on the right side. I done, they got killed one day trying to put my daughter on the bus. And they're doing 50, 60 miles an hour. Um. It it's decreasing the, the speed limit 45 miles an hour. I don't think we'll do a darn thing. I have lived out here 48 years. I have watched and looked. At the street forever. I walk the street three, at least three times a week that I I take a walk on it. And I can already tell you that um. I spoke about every one of these points when they decided that the driveway needed to be moved. Not one person heard or listened to my concern that it was coming too close to the bus depot. Or that people were going too, too soon, you know, too fast on the street. And or that they were not following the speed limit. I'm shocked that now it's a problem. I've already addressed all of those things. And I, and I can't believe that you're now hearing it. And didn't listen to a thing I said. It it's really, it's, I I don't know. And I certainly don't want lights down there. You know, it it is gonna come directly right up my hill and and cause some issues. I I have no problems with the current lighting. When they were on, I haven't seen anything, you know, of course, they're not on right now, but. The lighting that is there doesn't seem to bother my yacht at all. Um, but I certainly um. Have major concerns about that driveway. And I said that right from the very beginning. I don't know what else I can add to that. Sorry. It's, it's a hot topic for me.
Janine, uh, thank you. Thank you for your comments. And I can appreciate uh, the sensitivity uh, that that exists with the situation. Uh, and uh, we're hopeful that we can all work through it in a manner that will address everyone's concerns. And there are concerns and they're very real. And your, your. Were appreciated. Thank you. Thank you very much. Martha.
So uh, next on the list is Deb Carbone. Deb, if you can unmute yourself.
I do concur with what you're saying, living here also like you. You know, the speed limit on the street has been crazy. And I actually thought that. Study. Um, I can't remember the previous selectmen when this whole project first started. That they did do a traffic study and where that traffic study ended up, I don't know. But you were definitely right. The speed limit on the street has always been an issue. And we've even tried getting it lowered and um, nothing was ever done by that. So I definitely agree with you. My second comment is I've had um, several discussions with Eric. About the trees that are supposed to be placed on the property line. Um, I've stopped speaking with him. My attorney told me not to speak with him without anybody with me. So I want to find out what's going on with that. It is planting season. Um, Eric is supposed to get back to me. Um, I spoke to him right after the. Project was open. He asked me to wait a couple of weeks until the project got underway. No problem. I did that. I had called him. We discussed a light that he and I were both wrong as far as supporting the law. He had no right to ask me as well as I didn't have any right to give him permission. And then he was supposed to get back to me as soon as his tree person, um, he was supposed to call him. And nothing has happened. It is planting season and I want to know what is going on. I am tired of bringing this up. I want to know what's going on.
Um, thanks, Deb. So this, this question goes back to the question of a final mitigation of, of the property line. So. I don't know who, Eric, who you want in your team to address that?
I can address it.
Thank you.
I mean, do we wanna go, I don't know if this is the. Form that we want to go back and.
So my hand was raised. My hand was raised. So why?
Excuse me, just. Excuse me.
My hand was raised and I have something to say. I'm Eric's wife.
Okay.
And now.
All right, excuse me, excuse me. We have parliamentary procedure. So you need to just, you'll be spoken, you'll get your opportunity to speak. I'm sorry, Eric, go ahead.
Oh, um. Let's go, just go back to obviously, I think obviously we need other people when Debbie Carboni, myself speak because there's. A couple of sides to some stories. And I think the town can agree on how things played out with a couple of issues going on. So.
Let's talk about the girls and I being called mother.
I'd be more than happy to talk about, um, to meet with the town. You know, with some, a town official and Debbie Carboni, and we can agree where, where the um. Trees will go. And we do have the loom over there in the position that we talked about. And I'm just trying to, I've had issues with COVID. Supply chain to get the trees. So we have this, we're in position to get them. I'm just waiting for my tree guy to uh, get back to me on that.
Let's talk about my children.
That's why I haven't reached out to, um. We reached out to her. But I will, we're not, we're, I will reach out to her with someone from the town and we can go down.
They're so crazy.
We can meet, pick that spot where we need to put them.
Okay, Eric, I appreciate you having the tree mitigation, uh, tried to resolve that. I think that'll be beneficial. And uh, hopefully we can get it in before the.
So now it's my turn.
Thank you, Eric. All I'm asking you to do is just to reach out to me. I really appreciate that. And that's all I want is to find out where we stand on this. Not an issue. As long as we keep the communication open, not a big deal.
So.
Okay, as soon, Debbie, as soon as I can secure those, I, you've probably seen that I've had the uh, the pile there loom ready for those trees to go in.
No, I actually haven't. No, I actually haven't seen a pile yet, I have.
So I do, I do have loom in that position, I've had it there for a couple of weeks, I'm just, I'm just waiting, I'm just waiting for, I'm just waiting, waiting for him to get back to me on the, yeah, I'm trying, Michael, I'm.
Yeah, no, I know, Sarah, I'm gonna ask nicely, this isn't helping Eric and I, I understand that you're not happy with Ms. Carbone, this is not the proper forum, as your husband's attorney, I'm gonna ask you to please refrain in this forum, I, you know, this is a zoning and land use, this is not a trespass forum, this is not...
Oops. Okay.
I apologize, I apologize.
What, can I just finish? I don't have a clue what this is about.
Deb, Eric, I'm gonna do a timeline here for a sec, timeout, just for a sec, Deb, hold on, Eric, I, I'm just gonna try to indicate that at this time, I don't, I don't want the meeting to get out of control.
Right, I agree.
And so what I'm going to do is, I'm, I'm going to direct Martha to remove your wife from the conversation, so Martha, if you could please do that.
Yes, thank you.
I, I didn't want to do that, I don't.
No, I agree.
I don't ever want to remove anyone from the meeting, but if there's a situation where this profanity being promoted and offensive language, and it's, it's not helpful to our discussion, so I apologize that that needed to happen, but.
No, I agree, let me just get back to Debbie, Debbie, so just, there was a lot of distractions there.
Yes.
I will be, as soon as I can confirm with him that he has those trees.
Okay.
The loom is there, we are going to plant those, I did give you my word, he's having issues with getting those, I think they will be here next week, so if you want, we can have a town official come out, we can have someone with us, we can pick where we want to put those, but the loom is there, it's, they're ready to be planted, it will not take more than a couple hours to put those in.
And that's all I'm asking, and all I'm asking, Eric, is you and I to keep an open communication, that's it, I don't know what this is all about, but it's between you and me, thank you very much.
So if you poke, if you poke your head out there tomorrow, you'll see that pile loom right by where we talked about that shit, it's sitting there.
Great, thank you, thank you.
So I just want to be clear on something, that although Deb isn't a butter, she doesn't speak for the town, and she can't, she can't give you, don't take permission from her thinking that it's, that she's speaking for the town of Newbury, because she doesn't. So I want you to be aware of that, Eric.
Okay, so why don't we have someone from the town come out while, you tell me how you want to proceed with this, then?
Well, let's continue moving on, and then we'll wrap that up again.
I think the best way to do this, I think the best way to handle this, Eric, is to go through Martha, if you're gonna be doing anything of significance, it's gonna be, with regards to mitigation, please let it go before it happens, let's do this before it happens, so that someone from the town can be there and say, oh yeah, that makes perfect sense, this dovetails what we're trying to achieve, and that way we won't have to undo anything, or come back and say it wasn't done in a manner that we thought we mutually...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so please be proactive, great, thank you. I saw Amy pop back into our screen, and I know she wanted to say something, and I think she wants to raise her hand, do you want to raise your hand and say something? You do, okay, so we'll take your, we'll take your, your hand hand, please, you have the floor now, Amy, thank you.
Thank you for giving me the grace to talk.
Excuse me, may we have your address, please?
You may, Tunop Hill in Byfield.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Amy.
All I wanted to say was that this is actually a great opportunity for the community to understand the, the concerns, but this is absolutely a fabulous way that, like, Colby Farm, I mean, we're trying to keep a tiny town, which I love, I love my tiny town, but like, let's just be honest and say it has to grow.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that, and we're also in the proactive manner, and very encouraged that the project is going forward, so thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Okay, great, is there anyone else from the public that would like to, okay, Dale, I see you raising your hand in the screen, go ahead, sir, please name and address for Martha, thanks.
Dale Williams, 12 Scotland Heights Drive, I just had a couple comments about lights. The first one is, for the safety of the employees that work at the golf center after closing time, they can't even walk from the office to their automobile, because lights cannot be on, so, you know, it's a safety issue for their own physical safety, and it's an issue, maybe I missed it, because my thing is down, but, so it's a safety issue of having the lights on a little extra time. The other point about lights is the bus depot, now, I don't know, once a business is up and operating, that they can have whatever lights they want, but that, the, the lights at the bus depot are so invasive, to drive by you, almost sunglasses on, or your visor down on your head, on your windshield, because those lights just go everywhere, they're not shining down on the buses, they, they come across the road, Janine Cunningham must see them every day, every night, they're on 24/7, so I, I'm a little kind of perplexed by why the lights can't be on in the parking lot at the golf center for just an additional, maybe 30 minutes after the last employee leaves, that's all I wanted to comment on.
Thank you very much, Dale, we appreciate your participation in the meeting, thank you.
Can I answer that question, Pete?
Sure.
Dale, the reason why the lights aren't on is because the, the way the, the lights are built spill onto the neighbor's property and house, and into their windows, into their, into their rooms, so we need to fix, work with Eric, fix the lights, so that there's no light trespass on the neighbor's house, then he can have lights. As far as safety goes, that can be addressed through his operating hours, so there's no need to keep staff at the, on site at, at dark, because, you know, he can just modify his, his hours and go with daylight, I know there's other driving ranges in the state that, that do that as, as well, until we can address this, this issue. It's my hope that, you know, he's got a wonderful viable business that's, that's, can hopefully only, only grow, so we just gotta get through this little hump and get this, these lights fixed, and hopefully, things will go, go more smoothly for him.
Can I respond, Mr. Chairman, can I respond to Alicia?
Peter, can I respond to Alicia?
Joe, hold, hold on for a second, Alicia, you, you finished, Mike, Mike Doyle, I think Mike, as a board individual, please make your comment.
Real quick, a few lights can go on for safety, I mean, the days are getting shorter, the ice cream stand has to be cleaned, it takes time to close up a business, it's like, and I can't see what a few lights for the safety of, for, for the safety period, it's, I've never heard anything like it, I've never.
But he does have lights on, Mike, Mike, there is lights on, he has lights on, the lighting installed in the pro shop and the ice cream building, the exterior lighting for that.
Because these people have to walk in the dock, there could be animals up there, we don't know.
Yeah, well, that's, that needs to be addressed to his operating hours.
Right, no, but now something, why do we have to shut his operating hours down? He's got a viable business to run, we've already chopped off hours.
Mike, Mike.
I'm just against it, okay.
No, I understand, and I understand, I understand the frustration, and a lot, a lot of the issues in, in this project, and why we're here is just because we've, things have been kind of backed into, rather than addressed in the forward momentum, and so we're having to try to problem solve situations that we probably shouldn't be involved with, but there's the situations that are presented to us, so I am hopeful that we will get light consultants in a, in a short period of time that can help us address the issues of lighting, lighting is an issue, there was an agreement, if you, if you want to open, you can open, the occupancy permit was granted for that, with the understanding that lighting would be taken out of the equation, the only lighting that was, was going to occur was at the two locations Alicia mentioned, and that was agreed upon, and that's where we're at, and we also agreed upon that we're going to need a lighting consultant, and that's where we're at, so we have to go through these steps one at a time before we can get anyplace else, because that's, that's what we mutually agreed upon, so I hope that helps.
It does.
Okay, thanks, Mike, appreciate, okay, is there anyone else from the public that has any questions or comments?
Dale, actually Dale had a comment.
And Janine has raised her hand as well, but I know Dale wanted to say something else.
Dale. Just a quick follow-up to Alicia's comment, I'm, I'm unclear as to the invasive nature of lighting, whenever that comes about, why is the bus depot not considered invasive lighting for neighbors who happen to be a butters to the golf course as well? Is it because they're an established business, and what lights were put in there originally, they can stay forever?
I don't believe that.
Okay, so Dale, we, we're not, we're not here, unfortunately, to talk about the bus depot, we're just trying to mitigate the situation with this particular project, and I understand there are other projects around town that might create issues, but we're just trying to work on this project, and as this, as this small town goes from project to project to project, there's a learning curve, and our departments are trying to, it might be frozen, our departments are trying to work through that, and the boards are trying to work through that, to assist applicants to get to where they need to get to in a project.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, okay, Woody, did you want to say something? Did I see your hand up?
No, I'm good for now, keep, keep rolling, Pete.
Okay, Woody, Janine, did you want to say something?
Janine, you're muted. Yes, Dale is right, I, I complained about those lights over at Salters multiple times, and they've been there, I've been here 48 years, they're now here, maybe 40 years, I don't, I don't remember how long it's been, I had to put up room dockers, because nobody would really listen, and you need to, to really listen to people today, because I still see, even though I have room docking, I still see light and shadows and, and everything else, my room, my bedroom is directly across from the lights there, which is another reason I don't want lights really coming down from the street up the hill from the golf center, if I can help it, I've already got enough light in, in my bedroom, I don't need to turn a light on to walk around at night in my bedroom, and I'm complaining about all of that, because nobody would listen.
I wasn't aware of that, and now, I, I didn't know Salters was coming into your, your, your home, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the town administrator to take a look at that and see what we can do, because there should be no lights, like, across the street like that, coming into your home, and Deb, are they going into your home as well? No, okay.
They may be going into, to the Big Nose in Tubbers Rogers home.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna ask the town administrator to look into that, thank you for bringing that up.
I will say that Steve is a much more reasonable person, and he and I have, you know, I call him, just like I call Eric, if I have questions or concerns, I always call them first to mention that there's something wrong here, and then, if I have to, I'll call the town, I've never had to call any of you to complain about things, because I've always gone to the, the owner first, and.
Okay, so I'm, I'm confused, is there an issue with it coming into your home now or not?
Always, it, it has always entered my home, but I stopped complaining because it wasn't addressed because of who they were, they had a lot more power than I did back then. I stopped complaining.
I, I'm gonna circle outside of this public hearing back with you, Janine, okay?
Thanks, thanks, Alicia.
Thank you.
Chief Lucy has his hand up.
Chief?
At the risk of circling back a little bit, and in the spirit of listening and being heard, Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Carbone, I just want to let you know that I did hear you regarding the speeding concerns that you have, and we do have very, very aggressive enforcement out there, it's a big road, and it's, you know, and we do the best we can with that, so what I would suggest, I'll, I'll solicit some help from you folks, which is very, very helpful in our efforts to try to curb some of the problems out there, is if you have opportunity to take notice of the particular days and the particular time of days, it is most egregious, you have my, my emails on our website, I, my email is j.lucy@newbrypolice.com, you know, it's pretty easy, shoot that to me, and I will do some directed patrols, and try to, you know, we want the biggest bang for our buck to try to, you know, make it, make a difference out there for you, but the point of me circling back is I did want you to both to know that you are heard, and we will do something, I'm just gonna need a little bit of help to make it the most effective response that I can, okay?
Thank you, thank you very much.
And I think Jeff Walker made his hand up.
I just wanted to say, because the meeting has kind of gone in different directions, that if we look back of what we really have accomplished, Peter, and I know you're probably gonna recapitulate at the end, but, you know, we talked about an as-built, we talked about really doing a traffic study out front and looking at the speeds, and then we talked, you know, Brian talked about really getting in the lighting, so there's a lot of different studies that are gonna happen really quickly, and it looks like, you know, with also what Eric said about the planting, so it's been a good meeting, even though it's been a little distracted, so we've accomplished a lot.
Thank you, sir, Jeffrey, I appreciate that. Okay, all right, Martha, do you see anyone else that wants to comment, or?
Yeah, Leslie is.
Oh, Leslie, I'm sorry, I didn't see, yes.
No, that's okay, I had, I muted myself, I'd just like to go back on the timeframe of this whole project, and my biggest question is, why weren't these things done earlier? Why weren't these traffic surveys done earlier? Why weren't these as-built things done earlier? Everybody knows that when you go into a build project, there are going to be significant things that are gonna come along the way, that are gonna interrupt the build project, so my question is, why are we two and a half years down the road and going into a hopeful occupancy level, why haven't we done our due diligence at this point in time?
Is that a question to the boards, or is that a question to the applicant?
Both boards, and to the applicant.
Well, I'll try to, I'll try to handle it if I can, Les, and I could actually ask town council to, to help me with this, because when we talk with council about this project, he continues to reiterate that he has never seen a situation like this before, where the series of events that have occurred have occurred, and that the boards are put into very awkward positions that they're put into, and then we seem to have to negotiate a solution to a problem that the boards did not create, so the answer is, the answer is we're here, a series of events have brought us here, and it's an unusual series, and, you know, I'm gonna let Brian talk for a second, because I think he can articulate it a lot better than I could.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll do my best, you know, as everyone knows, I wasn't involved in sort of the Generation One of this project, but at, at one point, it was a fully permitted project, and a site plan approval and special permit had been written and filed, and, and the boards were done, and then things changed, and they changed quickly and significantly, and since then, the boards have been in somewhat of a reactive mode, because even during this process, our understanding of what's been built and, and what the sort of aspirations are for the site have evolved, you know, in real time, and that's just been the reality of it, so we've been tackling issues as they arise and identifying the issues as they're created by whatever's presented by the most recent plans and the most recent site improvements as we learn them, so I think my perception of how the boards have, have approached this has been to identify the most pressing issues and try to resolve them as proactively as possible as they become presented, but it, it's been somewhat of a moving target all along, so. But it's been somewhat of a moving target all along. So the, the lighting has been a big issue. The butters mitigation and other site mitigation issues have been very complicated, consuming issues for a great deal of time. And I think it's only of late that we've circled back to some more fundamental issues about traffic on the road and also the egress and ingress, you know, issues presented by the present location of the driveway. And just to clarify on, on that point, location of the driveway, the concern is sort of on two tiers. One is citing. And the fact that there is a driveway and there's going to be a driveway that accesses the site is, is not so much the issue. I mean, there always was going to be one and there always will be one. But it's, it's what impact that has on existing traffic flows, patterns, you know, travel safety issues, traffic calming issues. So that component wasn't, you know, thoroughly explored or vetted. So the, the existence of it and the citing of it, we always knew that was going to happen, but the, the, the sort of mitigation component of how we're going to account for the changes that were made in this latest generation, what I'm calling sort of the gen two of this project. We never really circled back to that one. So now it's been raised in a new way. New people have made, you know, new concerns known. And that circles back to some concerns that, you know, we've heard earlier on in the public hearing process. So we can't close out the public hearing and write a decision until we're confident that we can check every one of the boxes the boards have to check. And that includes, you know, the traffic calming, traffic mitigation component. So it's, it's an opportune time to revisit whether or not signage, illumination is, is warranted. And if so, to what extent and where and what that would be comprised of. And if there's any, you know, related and directly related traffic issues to this site that also affect, you know, the, the road itself, meaning, you know, the speed of travel and things like that. Those are things that need to be looked into before we close it out. So whether it happened when, you know, concurrently while we were looking at, you know, planting and other kind of site mitigation for vegetation disturbance or wetlands disturbance, or whether it happens now, it still has to happen. Before the public hearing can be closed out and we can reduce it to a, finally to a written decision.
If I may.
Sure.
There's some way that we can put a timeline on this mitigation for the different things that have to be taken care of, whether it's traffic, whether it's landscaping or anything else to button this up so that the applicant has an understanding of what direction he needs to go into.
I can, right, help you with that one too, Les. The, you know, the mitigation with regards to the butters and the trees and all that sort of stuff, that's been out there for a long, long time. That's been on plans for a long time, years. It just hasn't come to complete fruition because other components of, of the project were directing attention. So that's, that's been unknown. The lighting is new because the lighting plan changed. So we weren't, we weren't made aware of the lighting plan change. It changed. It happened. A new problem was presented. So now we have to create a resolution to it. Again, this is something that kind of happened. So I would love, as you would like to have a, a period to each of these situations that we could say by the 24th of, you know, October, this would happen by November 14th, this would happen, but we haven't been successful on trying to get that to occur to date. We would, I know that I would like this project to be very well buttoned up and done yesterday. Because I think a lot of energy has gone into it, countless, countless hundreds and hundreds of hours by board members, by, by staff, by town people on this situation. So it's, it is time to try to get this thing across the finish line. Absolutely, Leslie. I am with you.
I guess I'm looking at like, you know, a I'll get, I, I look at a six, six months to get this all complete, to get this all buttoned up, to get every duck in a row and let this project go into a complete business into fruition. And let's move down the road.
On board with you. On board with you. Martha, do you see any other hands raised or people that want to make comments?
I don't see any hands raised. I'm scanning. I don't see any physical hands raised either.
Okay, let's kind of ask, so figure out kind of where we want to go at this point in time for our next steps, our next action. So we have, as Jeffrey kind of alluded, we've made some progress. We will be having hopefully the lighting consultant component in, in the pipe. We will have the final components of what conservation is looking for addressed. We will initiate conversations with MVPC and with chief to see if there, there are traffic approaches that we should be looking at to help this project to continue. Are there any things that we need to think about with regards to any new conditions or punch listed that you should start to think of from your perspective, Martha?
No, I think that's it right now.
Okay, all right. Then that being the case, we will be continuing our hearing. Eric, I know that this has been a long process. I, I can understand the difficulties involved. And we, we want, we want to get there. We just need to address these other issues. And hopefully, Mr. Rosen, you can help orchestrate and interface with town council so that we can get the lighting component agreed upon so that we can get that to where it needs to be. And we can, we can get this thing closer. I see Mike raising his finger. Yes, sir.
Is there any way we can put one light on that's before the closing, just so? It's going to get dark and we got daylight savings time coming up. I'm just concerned for people getting hurt.
I, I got you, Mike. So what I-
Can we put one light up? That's all I'm asking.
So I'll tell you, I think we need to leave lighting where it is. When I go out, when I go out walking at night, what I do is I put a headlamp on.
All right, but still, it's like.
I, I understand. I understand, Mike. And it's up to the employer to determine the safety of his site. It's not up to our board.
If we don't allow him to put a light on.
It's, Mike, Mike, I didn't create the lighting problem. I'm trying to, I'm trying to work through it. Okay?
It's going to be a safety factor coming to effect.
So Pete, I, I have a question. I want to make sure that, that the applicant's engineer is clear and understands what's required of him, that the town is requesting. I sensed a little bit of frustration on his part and I want to apologize if we've done anything to confuse him. But I, I just want him to be clear and to understand what we need. Because I know that we can't pass this legally, we can't approve this project without, we're missing some piece of it. So.
So what I, I think to help address that, Alicia, I'm going to suggest that the engineers have a, have a combined conversation with Martha and with conservation to find out what components are necessary so that those can be addressed, so that they can be presented to the board and the board can be able to digest those materials. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Martha, you comfortable with that?
Sure. Attorney Rosen has his hand up.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I would be happy to interface on that as well to ensure that from an interpretation perspective and if, if there is a question or concern, I can get back in touch with attorney winner if needed. But I, I agree. I mean, I think at the end of the day, it's a matter of potentially using the wrong definition and people thinking the wrong thing, when in fact, it's, you're really trying to answer questions. And if your engineers tell us the questions and our engineers can't answer those questions or show them on a plan, then Mr. Chair and Madam Chair, to your points, we didn't satisfy you. And I'm happy to play a role in making sure that ignoring the term used for the name of the plan, it's not the name of the plan that matters, what you're looking for. And we need to make sure that whether it's a stormwater calculation or shown where the stormwater pipes are on a plan, whatever that might be, it, it's answering the question, not defining the name of the plan.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. That's very helpful.
As to Mr. Doyle's point, I, I think we want to work with you and we want to find the solution. We've been saying that for a while. Obviously, there's a little bit of frustration that we went six weeks and we still don't have the expert, but we also know that that was no one's fault. Again, along the way, there have been odd things that have happened and this is, let's chalk this up to another one of those things. I think one of the things that we would greatly appreciate, and, and I'm asking this now because I know where you're, where I think you're going next, is to look at a very short schedule for the next meeting to try and keep pressure on everybody to get at least one more task resolved. And I really do think lighting, you know, to Ms. Matthews' point, so that this just doesn't stick out there. I'd love to see the next meeting within two or three weeks to keep some pressure on everybody to get that contract signed with the lighting consultant to enable me to get our people to deliver the information to that lighting consultant and to just get it done. And then Mr. Doyle, to your point, the sooner Eric can get the information to the towns consultant, the sooner the towns consultant can look at it, the sooner we can find a solution. And Mr. Doyle, the sooner we can turn a light on.
Thank you.
I, I do want, I do want to answer something that you said, Attorney Rosen, but Jeff, did you want to say something?
I think Attorney Rosen probably answered it for me in some respects. I do agree with Mike. Sometimes we don't agree, but I do agree right now. I think.
I vibe, Jeff.
I think somehow with days shrinking, we got to find a way to be able to light the parking lot for, for when people are leaving after closing.
Okay.
Jerry has her hand up.
Jerry, yes.
I, I, I do agree with Mr. Doyle and Mr. Walker. You know, the, the, the employee shouldn't be hurting themselves or twisting an ankle in their endeavor to make a living. And I also don't think Mr. Sorensen should be requested or asked to cut his days short when he's only acting for, you know, the good of his employees. So I, I think we have to make some accommodations and we have to do it sooner than later because as Mr. Doyle said, you don't want any employee getting hurt. So I, I.
I, great. I, and I, I'm going to chime in now. I don't know how many meetings we have had with this project. I really don't. I, I've lost count. And I can tell you that there are other projects that the planning board is involved with. I think we have 11 other projects other than this that we now have to negotiate. So I would love to be able to say that yes, we can do a meeting in two weeks, Attorney Rosen. I would love to. But I have to let you know that our schedule is actually pretty full.
Oh.
And we can't even do this type of a meeting on our regular business meeting because it knocks everything else out. So we have to have special meetings just for this one topic. With that being said, I'm going to ask Martha, Martha, do you have our flow sheet or our Excel as to where we're at with stuff?
If you can bear with me for a second, I will see if I can pull that up.
And then I don't know what the select, select boards meeting schedule is looking like, Alicia, or what you have coming down the pipe for items or agendas.
Our next scheduled board meeting is on the 27th. I could, I could ask the town administrator or Martha, I'm going to ask you to ask the town administrator if we could piggyback it on that meeting. I'm not sure what we have for agenda items. We had a pretty packed agenda the last meeting, so.
All right, let's see if this works. All right, can you see that?
In just a second, I think. Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. So with the, Martha, can you go to the, fill up the bottom of the screen or so we can see the line beyond line 28 and 29? Shift the screen up. Yep. So this is what we're dealing with current projects, folks, just from a planning board standpoint. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 projects that we have to negotiate. And we're negotiating these in two week blocks. So understanding that, and we, we meet every two weeks and then we have to sprinkle this into somewhere somehow. And then also dovetail it with the select board. I just want that to be on everybody's understanding. So Mike, I would love to be able to meet in three weeks to get this resolved, Mike Doyle. But the, the reality is we have other business that we're dealing with. And there's a lot of people that have been placed on hold as a result of COVID. So a lot of projects have been in a holding pattern and some projects have been quite, quite some time. So I'm trying to be sensitive to everyone and everything that we have going on. So with that said, Martha, what looks like the most realistic time that we could look at something like this? Are we looking at like a four week window from, from our perspective?
I mean, right, right now, the 18th is the only, that's, that's a regular meeting for us.
And it's open.
So if we wanted to try to do it on one of our meeting nights, otherwise if we want to add a meeting.
So the, the 18th, just so. The 18th of November.
I would prefer to piggyback. Because when you get into the 18th of November, you're getting into the holidays.
Holiday, yeah.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that if nobody else does. And if they do, I'm flexible.
Yeah. So what we have to keep in mind, Leslie, is all of our projects that we have, like, you know, on previous dates, those are going to be moving forward down the, down our, down our spreadsheet. So everything is, you know, two or three meetings are kind of leapfrogging onto, onto one another. Even though they don't appear this way, we have to understand the projection of what's going to happen.
And we've, we've got some new ones that need to be opened, some applications that we've just received. We've got to open public hearings for those. We've got some public hearings ongoing that will probably, you know, be fairly lengthy. So trying to do too much in one, one night of public hearings is going to be difficult.
So I, what I was kind of hearing, Martha, we probably can't do it on a scheduled meeting night for the planning board.
What is selectment?
So I'm not sure what the board of selectmen schedule looks like or if we have to, again, pick a, a neutral night again on one of these off weeks. Board of selectmen are, that's the sec, is that the second and fourth?
Second and fourth, yes.
Second and fourth, planning boards, first and third. So.
I'm, I'm flexible, so I, I can do whatever.
And the 11th is Veterans Day. So that won't work. The 17th, if we're looking at Tuesdays, that's CONCOM. So Pete, I think that would be problematic for you.
Yeah, so CONCOM is, I think we've got to two a month, number two of CONCOM. And I think those are the, the first and third weeks of the month as well. That means CONCOM will be on the 3rd and 17th. So the 3rd and 4th, 17th and 18th are not options. The 10th and the 24th, well, the 24th is definitely not an option, the 10th is not an option. So we're looking at some Thursdays, which would be the 12th or the 19th. The 12th perhaps. Does the 12th work for the select board?
It works for me. Does it work for the, my board?
Oh, what, what time?
November 12th, probably 7:00 PM.
November, I, I'm at work. Say, we got work schedules now too. That's why, why don't we piggyback onto the selectmen's board on the 20th? That's why, why don't we piggyback onto the selectmen's board on the 27th?
Well, I don't know if the planning boards are going to be ready to meet on the 27th. Or Eric will be ready to meet on the 27th. And if we need to go farther out.
I'm not sure if the lighting component will be buttoned up within two weeks.
Yeah, that's, that's less than two weeks from now.
So is Eric still on?
Yeah, I'm on. We can do the 27th. We can do the 27th, Mike.
No, I'm saying, will your lights be, will everything be ready that they want, they're asking for?
Mike, Mike, we have to hire consultants and I don't think we're going to have the consultants in place to be able to review materials and have them presented to the board with, within less than two weeks. I don't think that's a realistic expectation. So we
How about the 10th?
And you're referring to the lighting?
Correct.
Right, right. Because we still have to obtain the person, get him the information he needs, have him go out to the site.
You know, so it's going to be more than a two week process. There could be a progress report, but I can't imagine that it would be complete.
What do you think about the 10th, Martha and Pete?
I think that's where we're kind of getting close to. Martha, what does that look for on your end?
And that's fine. That's, it's really, you know, it's a select board meeting. I don't know what else may be on the agenda for that night. Alicia, do you have any sense?
No, let me, let me see if I can text the town administrator.
Okay. And as we're doing that, I'm just going to pull my board real quick. The November 10th, which is a Tuesday. Larry, would that work for you?
Yes.
George, would that work for you?
Yes.
Okay. Leslie, would that work for you?
Yes.
And Woody, would that work for you?
Yes.
Okay. So from a planning board standpoint, we could do it. Now it's just a matter of if that would work for the select board.
Shall I take down the schedule?
Yes, that'd be great. Thanks so much.
The 10th works for me. I mean, the, yeah, the 10th, 10th works here.
I just got to confirm that we can fit it on our agenda.
Wonderful, wonderful. Then that being the case, I would entertain a motion from a member of the planning board to continue our public hearing to the 10th of November. Would that be 7 o'clock, Alicia, or 7:30?
I
7:15?
I'm thinking. Honestly, I'm thinking maybe 7:45. That'll give us 45 minutes to get business done and then we can do this public hearing. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
And then, and then if if for some reason, I can't think of, I mean, Martha, help me out here. Do you think there'd be any reason why we couldn't have it then?
I guess one question might be, would it be, would it make sense to actually start the meeting a little bit earlier?
And
At 6:30.
Excuse it if we are running overtime on something else.
If, if you started the select board meeting at 6:30 and maybe this was on at 7:15.
Why don't we, why don't we punt with that? Because
X40, 6:30?
No, I think the select board probably would have to meet first and then this meeting would follow afterwards. Otherwise it would it might create
JR signed with it, so like we can, we can go.
At 6:30. So for your meeting to start and then start the public hearing at 7:15?
Yes, I think we should open up our select board meeting first. Jeff, you giving me a little guidance on this? Do you think that would be best to open up our select board meeting at 7 o'clock and then schedule the public hearing for 7:45? You're on mute. I can't hear you. I see your lips moving, though. I lost your audio.
Lost his voice.
My audio at all? No?
No, yeah, far away.
I think starting early is good, maybe 6 o'clock even.
I had no problem with that.
Seems good.
Yeah, no, me neither. Jerry, you?
Yeah, 6 seems good.
Okay, so if I understand this correctly, we, the select board will be starting at 6 and then we will have this public hearing continued at 7:15. Is that what I'm picking up?
And we're going on 11:12?
11:10.
10? Which is a Monday night?
No, Tuesday night.
Okay, so I would
I'll be late.
Okay, I would entertain a motion from the planning board for continuation of this meeting to the 10th, the 10th at 7:15.
I move to continue the public hearing to November 10th at 7:15 PM.
Much. And there's a second. Very good. Is there any discussion on the motion? I don't see any signs of discussion. So I'm going to do a roll call. Larry, how say you?
Yes.
George, how say you?
Yes.
Woody, how say you?
Yes.
Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Ares in favor as well. Thank you very much.
And can I entertain a motion for my board?
Motion.
Motion. Be a little more specific.
Motion meeting to the, I'll open it up at 6. Is that what you're looking for, which?
So, okay, so I, can I have a motion to over, to move the public hearing or continue the public hearing?
Yes.
Until November 10th at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay.
Said 7:15 earlier.
I'm sorry, Jerry, what?
Is it 7 or 7:15? You were talking 7:15 earlier.
7:15.
7:15. Thank you.
That gives us an hour and 15 minutes to do our
An hour and 15 for our meeting. Okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Jeff Walker. Jeff, I can't hear you. Yes, okay. Jerry Heavy.
Yes, yes.
Mike Doyle.
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes.
Excellent, excellent. That being the case, I want to thank everyone. And at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting.
So moved.
Great. Second, great. Discussion, no signs of discussion. Larry, how say you?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yep.
Chairs in favor as well. Thank you.
And can I, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor. Jeff Walker. Jerry Heavy.
Yes.
And Mike Doyle.
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes.
Everyone, everyone, thank you very much and have a good evening.
Good to you.
Happy Halloween.